Please take your seats, Mr. Benton. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the St. Lucie County Planning and Zoning Commission, November eighteenth. If everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
Hallelujah. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine and just as for all.
Heavenly Father, as we begin this meeting, we ask that you would guide our thoughts and our actions so that we may have a successful meeting. Please help us to accomplish our goals while displaying your character. We pray these things in your mighty name. Amen.
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 Okay. First off, I want to say welcome to our Secretary Stephanie. Thank you for joining us. We're happy to have you.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, please call the roll.
Okay. Mr. Sanders? Mr. Binner?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Oldell?
Here.
Mr. Sleet?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Lowndes?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bridgers?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Slack?
Here, ma'am.
Mr. Bunt?
Here.
Vice Chair Low?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Taylor?
Here, ma'am.
Does any commission members have any announcements or disclosures? Seeing none, we'll move on to item seven, the minutes from the meeting of October twenty-first. If there are any additions or corrections, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Sanders? Mr. Binner?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Oldell?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Mr. Sleet?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Lowndes?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bridgers?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Slack?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bunt?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Low?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Taylor?
Yes, ma'am. All right, moving on to item eight, public comment. If there's any members of the public that wish to speak on non-agenda items, please come forward. Seeing none, closed public comment. And we'll move on to item nine A, our public hearings. Madam Secretary, if you can read that item, please.
Item nine A, Arcosa Conditional Use Petition. The applicant is seeking approval of a conditional use petition to allow concrete manufacturing as a permitted use within a, the proposed planned non-residential development, PNRD, to be known as Arcosa.
Mr. McCrain, we're ready for your presentation.
Good evening, Chair, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Chris McCrain, planner with the Planning and Development Services Department, and tonight I'll be presenting agenda item nine A for a conditional use petition submitted by CNC Family Groves and White City Grove Incorporated. The petition is to allow for a concrete manufacturing facility as a permitted use within the proposed Arcosa planned non-residential development. This conditional use is a quasi-judicial agenda item. In addition, I will also be presenting agenda item nine B, a requested rezone from AR-1 Agricultural Residential to the planned non-residential development zoning district, and a preliminary site plan approval for seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty square foot concrete manufacturing facility, an approximate four hundred, or four thousand square foot office, and associated site improvements. The preliminary, or the proposed preliminary PNRD site plan agenda is also a quasi-judicial. And although I'll be presenting the items together, the board must vote on the item, agenda items separately. In accordance with public notice requirements outlined in section eleven point zero zero point zero three of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, advertisement for this public hearing was advertised in the St. Lucie News Tribune on Saturday, November sixth, two thousand and one, or two thousand and twenty-one. In addition, notices were mailed to adjacent property owners located within five hundred feet of the subject properties, and two signs are placed, one at the intersection of Favorite Road and Selvus Road, and a second sign was placed on the subject property. Thirty-eight point zero five project site is located on the north side of the unimproved Favorite Road right-of-way, situated approximately three hundred feet east of Post Office Road and three hundred feet west of Selvus Road in Fort Pierce. The subject properties are designated by the mixed-use development future land use, with a residential suburban land use situated to the east and southeast, public facilities' land use to the south, and industrial land use to the west. The city of Fort Pierce's transportation utilities future land use designation is located to the north of the subject property. Pursuant to the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan, this subject property is identified as the Casson's Mixed Use Activity Area and is restricted to industrial land uses. The Comprehensive Plan further requires any future development to be approved through the planned non-residential development process, and shall provide appropriate open space and buffering adjacent to residential uses and environmental conditions, and site access shall be provided from the west via Favorite Road. At this time, the subject properties are designated by the AR-1 Agricultural Residential Zoning District, and the adjacent zoning designations include residential single-family two to the east, agricultural residential to the south and east, industrial heavy to the west, institutional zoning to the south, and the city of Fort Pierce's Utility Zoning District located to the north. Through the planned, uh, planned non-residential development approval process, the application, application is seeking to redesignate the property's zoning designation from agricultural residential to the planned non-residential development zoning designation. The submitted preliminary site plan identifies a seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty square foot manufacturing facility, a four thousand square foot office, and four hundred and sixty-one thousand square feet of shell rock lay-down yard for finished products, as well as associated site improvements, which include a five-foot right-of-way dedication along the south property boundary, improvements to the Favorite Road right-of-way from Post Office Road to the proposed access to the southeast of the subject property, onsite water detention, five-and-a-half acre lake, water and wastewater connections with the Fort Pierce Utilities Authority, outdoor aggregate storage and silo, vehicular use parking and loading, and an eight-foot opaque fence with associated landscaping. According to the preliminary site plan, the following separations are provided from the residential properties to the east, include sixty, the sixty-foot tall silo is set back approximately seven hundred and sixty-nine feet, eight hundred and two feet between the proposed manufacturing plant, and approximately a hundred and fifty-four feet of separation from the product lay-down yard. In addition to the separation provided, the plan also requires the applicant provide a ten-foot landscape buffer along all property boundaries, and a fifteen-foot landscape buffer adjacent to Road right-of-way. Further, furthermore, when a non-residential development abuts residential, the code requires an eight-foot tall masonry wall or opaque fence, and perimeter tree plantings, and continuous hedge planted on both sides of the barrier, in accordance with Land Development Code's section seven, oh nine, oh four E. The submitted preliminary site plan identifies an eight-foot tall opaque fence and required landscaping to be constructed along the eastern property line adjacent to the residential properties. Upon approval of the preliminary planned non-residential site, residential development site plan, the applicant will be required to receive final site plan approval pursuant to Land Development Code's section eleven oh two oh five B. And pursuant to Land Development Code's section eleven oh two oh two B, any non-residential use of up to five hundred thousand square feet for developments identified under the county's targeted industry list shall be designated as a minor site plan, and may receive administrative approval from the Director of Planning and Development Services following review and certification from the county's Development Review Committee. The applicant has submitted a concurrent minor site plan application and final site plan documents, which is currently being reviewed by the county's Development Review Committee, pending approval of the conditional use petition and preliminary planned non-residential site development and rezone. According to the applicant, the offices will occupy approximately six to seven employees, while the manufacturing plant will occupy twenty-five to thirty employees over two shifts of around ten to fifteen employees each. The hours of operation for the manufacturing plant will be between the hours of seven AM and six PM, Monday through Friday, with the occasional weekend shift for maintenance. Deliveries are scheduled between the hours of eight AM and five PM, Monday through Friday, and the typical, typical length of the utility poles will be between eighty and a hundred feet, and the facility will manufacture approximately six to seven poles per day with, with around ten to twelve poles being delivered per week. In accordance with public notice requirements outlined in section eleven point zero zero point zero three of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, notices and response forms were mailed to adjacent property owners located within five hundred feet of the subject property. Of the thirty notices mailed out, the Planning and Development Services Department received three response forms for the conditional use petition. Two responses are not in favor of the conditional use, and one response was in favor of the conditional use. The proposed planned non-residential development rezone and preliminary site plan conformed to the standards of review set forth in section eleven point zero six point zero three and eleven point zero two point zero seven of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, and have been found to be consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan. Staff is recommending the Planning and Zoning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the Board of County Commissioners, subject to the following conditions of approval. Sorry, I skipped over this one. My apologies. The conditional use petition, which was this one, conforms to the standards of review set forth in section eleven oh seven oh three of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, and is also consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies in the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan, and staff is recommending that the Planning and Zoning Commission also for a recommendation of approval to the Board of County Commissioners, subject to the following conditions. The planned non-residential development shall always comply with the St. Lucie County Noise Ordinance pursuant to section twenty-eight dash one-one-zero for sound level limitations. All operations shall be limited between the hours of seven AM and ten PM. Prior to the issuance of a vegetation removal permit, a one-hundred percent Gopher Tortoise survey conducted by a state-certified Gopher Tortoise agent per Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission protocol shall be required. And lastly, the, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, all category one listed invasive plants shall be eradicated from the site. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff and the applicant's agent are available for any questions.
Okay. Is there any questions of staff from the board? None?
I got one.
Okay. Mr.?
Why ten PM?
That is the time that's identified under the, the St. Lucie County ordinance for noise limitations.
You're just spelling it out. It wasn't anything different than what's already there.
I'm sorry?
We were just spelling it out, then it's not different than what's already on the books.
That's correct.
Does that, um, go for weekend hours as well? For the, for the occasional weekend shift that was noted in there?
So their hours of operation aren't identified to go till ten? That's just something that's required by the ordinance, that noise ordinance should be restricted past the hours of ten o'clock.
Is this, or noise ordinance the same for Saturday and Sunday?
It's, yes.
For those hours?
Monday through Sunday.
Mr. Slack?
Mr. Chair?
Um, I have a couple of questions. First of all, what is the future land use of the area to the south and east of the subject property?
So to the south, it's public facilities, which is where the post office, the sheriff's department, and New Horizons is located?
Including that Ag One parcel that's behind the sheriff's department?
So this is the zoning, so the zoning district is different than the, the future land use.
Okay. All right. And what do we have in terms of ordinances for dust control and air quality?
Off the top of my head, I do not know that answer, but we can look into that a little bit further if you'd like.
Perhaps the applicant can speak on their plans for dust control and air quality?
We can have them come up.
Good evening. For the record, Brad Curry with the EDC representing the applicant. The process itself, this is a concrete pole manufacturing plant, and it's, the, the manufacturing is done internal to the building, and it's, they have these molds that they pour the concrete in, and it's a wet mix, and then they spin the mold to centrifugal force pushes the concrete out to the outside. So in overall, in the creation of it, it's not a lot of dust that's being done, and then once the pole's being, has been manufactured, it gets taken to the, the storage area. So I think the only dust that I could imagine would be any, um, any vehicle, you know, driving out to where the poles are stored, but the vehicle that does that is a, is a big gantry crane that, I think travels at like four miles an hour, so I don't think it's going to kick up much dust either. So I don't, from, overall, if there is any dust created during the manufacturing process, it's going to be inside the building, and if there's any dust outside, I can't, I don't know what the dust would come from on the outside, because it's a slow-moving crane that moves these poles around on-site.
Right. But if you are mixing batches of concrete on-site, it means you've got cement dust associated with the delivery and moving of that cement powder, as well as the dust that comes along with the aggregate, and I, I'd like to hear what their plans are to, to handle dust control from the aggregate and from the cement powder as well.
I, unfortunately, I don't have a good answer for you, because I haven't, I haven't even asked that question of my client. There is aggregate on the site, it's on the extreme north end of the site, north, northeast end of the site, and they do have a silo that has the material in it, but from what I've been told is the mixing occurs inside of the building, and any dust that occurs would just be for moving the materials outside, which really isn't, it's not, the mixing occurs inside of the building, so I, I can't, I haven't ever asked that question, so I, my client, my client is here, I could ask them that question to see if there's a dust problem, but we haven't been posed that question, so I don't have a good answer for you.
And perhaps they have this facility repeated on other sites, and they could speak to what their policies are?
This is actually their first facility that they've done.
I see. Okay.
First facility in Florida, I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, if they've done it in other states, then they probably have it for you.
Sure, I'll, I'll have Mr. Hal Fawnville come up. How do you, and he can explain a little bit more about the mixing, but what, from my understanding, it's all done inside the building, and there is aggregate storage outside, but it's pretty minimal.
Good evening. I'm Hal Fawnville from Arcosa. On the, on the aggregate, we use washed aggregate. It has to be pure for our process, so there's not, there would not be a lot of dust with the, with the aggregate itself. Now, the cement mix, there could be dust, but it's not, um, you know, it's, it's, it's very confined to one, one space at the, at the end of the plant where everything gets mixed. And we've tried to put that as far away from everyone that could be affected by it as possible, so, um, and then, like Mr. Curry was saying, the, the dust on the outside, we don't think is a concern, because we have big, big cranes that move very slow, um, that would be on the, through the storage yard. So I hope that answered your question, but if not, I would be happy to explain further.
And you are mixing the batches inside the building?
Yes.
So the only exterior dust would be really the result of offloading the cement powder into your storage?
Yes, it would be from offloading when we do the store, when we store.
Are you, does it come in by truck or by train car?
By truck.
Okay.
What kind of noise levels do you anticipate?
The noise would be really, it's the, these spinners that do the centrifugal spinning of the pole, they, that's, that's the noisiest part of the operation, and within our facility, we will have interior walls designed to, to trap the noise, and, you know, we have, we have ocean regulations and, and everything else that we have to adhere to for our own internal noise protection, so.
Okay. Vice Chair Low, do you have a question?
Has the fire department reviewed his plans?
They have reviewed for access and water, and have signed off.
Mr. Lowndes?
I'd like to pursue the, the noise level just a little bit. From the heavy equipment plus the manufacturing, we've got people that live near this, and if you have transportation of large cranes at nine o'clock at night, that may be a bit much. What is the noise level of those cranes? Do you have another plant someplace that you can compare it to?
Yes, sir. The, the noise level for those cranes is minimal, because they have to move so slowly. It's not, I mean, it's, it's certainly less, less noise than a tractor-trailer makes when it's idling.
Compare it to a front-end loader?
A front-end loader, it's, it's more quiet than a front-end loader. Because they, they creep, they creep along. It is, it's like a boat lift.
A what, sir?
A boat lift. Think about one of those big boat lifts, like one of the director, but it's not quite that big. So I think about, that's what it's going to look like.
That gives me a better visual of what you're talking about. You're not talking about a, a crane that you dig ditches with lifting these things. You're talking about a, a hoist that's going to move slow.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm still a little concerned about the late night. Is that standard for you all to work that late at night with two shifts, I guess?
It is, it is standard to work two shifts. I would not say it's standard to work until ten o'clock at night on two shifts. It's more, what we like to do is we, we would have an eight-hour shift that starts at, say, seven AM, and then the second shift would come in and have a three or four-hour overlap over that, so we're really talking a total of, you know, twelve hours, seven to seven is more typical, but sometimes if we're behind, we may have to work overtime, and there may be, there may be nights that we do have people there until ten o'clock.
Would you be loading these poles out later than ten o'clock at night?
No, sir. We would only do that during the daytime. Typically, the loading usually happens in the mornings.
How long, what's the length of these poles?
Some can be a hundred, a hundred and ten feet. Those, those are very rare, because you have to get special permits to all those. Usually, they'll be in sections that are forty to sixty feet.
I'm sure that the corner going from Favorite Road to Post Office Road has been looked at as a turn of what you've got to do to get off your property and get to Midway with it?
Yes, sir. We've run the auto turn, and we've spoken with the client, and they're very familiar with how to navigate through, through streets with these poles, so, and, and we are, we do have to construct Favorite Road, so we probably will have a little bit bigger turning radius there in order to make that turn.
Mr. Curry, is there any consideration for the size of these poles entering Midway Road and getting onto Midway Road?
No, sir. We have no concern with that. We've done all of the work, and we feel like it will be good.
Staff, is there a concern from you all concerning that, that size of pole and tractor or trailer and such have you getting into and out of this area off of Midway Road?
So we have had the, um, the turn analysis and the, the truck movements being, had been submitted to the Development Review Committee and have been signed off by the Public Works Department.
So I, I don't know if we've ever, I don't think, I'm trying to think of, I've ever seen a hundred-foot pole going down the road, but from what the client has told me, Hal and, and his associates, a lot of the pole sticks out over the truck, so it's not like it's a hundred and, and ten from the back of the cab. It goes actually, I'd say thirty or forty feet of it goes actually over the cab, so it's, it's not a hundred and ten from the cab back, it actually sticks out over the cab a bit.
Mr. Curry, I, I understand, and I'm just concerned, the traffic that's on Midway Road is going to get worse. It's going to get more. And you've got then an industrial truck that's going to enter that traffic flow. You also have industrial trucks that are going to exit off of Midway into that road that's going to affect the traffic. I've, I've got a concern with that, just by the physical traffic that's on Midway Road at that point.
And, and Mr. Lowndes, I believe, um, Midway Road's in the process of being improved, as, I mean, their, their plans are being proposed at this point, so I think that would only help us with the traffic circulation here, and there's actually, we can go out to the, the back entrance if we need to, that's just to take us out to Jenkins Road as well, so there's a couple of different ways to access this point.
Okay.
So, um, we've, you know, these, these guys have looked at all of the different options that they have for entering the site, and they feel that this site is, it will, will function for them.
You do have another ingress access to it besides Midway Road?
It would, it would be Midway Road. It would just be another access out to Midway Road. We can go around the back end and go up to, where Jenkins is supposed to come through. That, that, that internal road on Post Office Road goes up and circulates around and ties back into the rest of the industrial part, where the Indian River Packers facility is and all that, so it, it would be another access point to, to, back to Midway, not outside of Midway.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. I'm, I'm, I'd like to hear more about, about your noise a little bit later, as your presentation continues.
I, I just wanted to say one more thing about the hours of operation. We really haven't limited the hours of operation. That's not something that, that my client or myself have, have offered up. I believe staff is just, like we discussed, implementing the code, we would be okay with an hours of operation season at seven PM, so we would offer that up right now if that helps the board.
I like that.
I, I would, Mr. Chairman, that would certainly smooth my considerations from seven to ten o'clock at night with residents in that area.
What's the aspect to the, the trucks going out into Midway into traffic? I mean, what's the, like, turnaround on these poles? Are you having five or ten of them going out a week, or what's the, what's the anticipated truckload frequency?
Usually, it's, it's probably four to five a day. And when we're going out, we're always turning right onto Midway, because the, you know, we're, we're going either north and south on I-95 or the turnpike.
On the, the site plan, it noted, coming out of Favorite, it showed you turning right onto Post Office Road and looping around. Is that, that was something we noticed on the, on the site plan?
I don't, I didn't see that. You talked, is there a turn-in analysis? Is that what you're speaking?
Yeah. I don't remember what page it was on. I didn't know if that was on purpose, or...
Yeah, I, I think we were, um, sorry, we, we do those turn-in, those auto turns all the time, and I think we were just showing they could go either way. If it can go north, it can go south, so there was no intention. We, um, we run those a lot, just to make sure that the trucks can maneuver throughout the site, so, um, we probably should have done one for the north and one for the south, but I don't, there was no, there's no magic to the reason it's going north.
Okay. I was just concerned about that. The, um, buffering for the residential neighborhood, I know the eight-foot opaque fence is what I believe is required on the code, but, um, I believe in the neighborhood meeting, it was discussed about doing a concrete or cinder block wall? Are you guys open to that?
It was, it's an option in the code. The code says you can do either or. I just wanted, before we talk about concrete versus fences, talk about, a little bit about separation and what's going to go there. We staff identified that our building is extreme, as far to the west as we can basically push it. It's over eight hundred feet from our property line, from the property to where the building is. In that area, we're going to have a lake, we're going to have an open area that we're not proposing any development, and right now, if we were ever to propose development in that area, we'd have to come back before this board, so it's not like we're trying to sneak in something in that area. Up against the lake, we're proposing a ten-foot landscape buffer, and then we actually have to have a twenty-one foot of upland planting around the lake that the code requires. Code requires basically ten feet around your entire lake, but it allows you to put fifty percent of that, to keep fifty percent clear. So we're going to have a ten-foot buffer, twenty-one foot of upland planting, and then a ten-foot latoral area. So overall, there's about forty-one feet of planting from where the fence is going to go to where the edge of the water is, so there's going to be quite a bit of vegetation in that area. Our thinking was that that, the separation that we were providing, along with the vegetation, we felt like a fence was going to be enough from, from, uh, from a... we felt like a fence was gonna be enough from a sound standpoint. The reality is, I'm not sure that a wall helps with sound any more than a eight-foot fence. I think the landscaping that we're proposing is really gonna help with the landscaping and the separation. The mechanism that makes the sound is in the building. And it actually has a wall built around it because as it spins, they don't want anybody getting near it. So it's got a couple of things internal to the building that are gonna keep the sound from escaping. So we have it. We haven't... We don't... We can't make the noise. So we can't test it to see what it's gonna sound like. But I can tell you that we do have to abide by the code. So let's say, I have had the privilege of dealing with a bunch of car washes around town. And car washes are often noisy as well. And we can test those a little bit because we have the information. But the reality is that the car wash people are smart about that. And they can put buffering things... They can put silencers on the blowers. They can add walls. They can add things to help with the sound, if the sound is an issue. We don't believe the sound's going to be an issue. But if it does become an issue, we do have to comply with the code. And then we would have to do things internal to the building to keep the sound down even more.
What's the fence gonna be constructed of?
We're probably gonna do a white PVC fence. We think that is the best. It lasts the longest and holds up to the elements better than a wood fence.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. O'Dell was next.
Mr. Curry, does this conditional use... Does it have a sunset?
No, sir. As long as we comply with the conditions, it goes with the land.
Okay. Thank you.
But if we don't comply with the conditions, then you guys can withdraw.
Then you have a sunset.
That's right.
Vice Chair Low?
I have a question, too. There is no traffic light when the trucks pull out, is there?
No, sir. On Midway, there's no traffic light there or where future Jenkins would be.
Will you put... How long does it take for this truck with this 60- or 100-foot pole to pull out? Will you put warning signs or something like ahead?
We haven't... There will be no official flashing lights saying big trucks. We haven't talked about that. I think that's something we could potentially do. Hal, have you guys thought about how if you're gonna have another person that comes out and stops traffic, how that's gonna work?
For the really long ones, you have to get a special permit to travel on the highways. And you have to have an escort for the really long ones. Which, you know, there may be one of those every six months. There might be a year that we have zero. There may be, you know, two in one month. They're sporadic. They're not predictable. But the good thing about those is there are not very many of them. With the standard traffic going in and out there every day, it's no bigger than any other 18-wheeler. Usually, typically, it's on an 18-wheeler, standard flatbed. Longer poles, they have special trailers where part of the poles go over the cab of the truck. So it's still within, you know, the standard highway limits.
Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Lawrence?
Mr. McCain, can you give us some idea where our residents are and locations of this by going back to your aerial?
So the properties directly to the east of the red property boundary are designated agricultural residential. And there are... Just at the southeast corner of the property, there is another few properties that are zoned residential or agricultural residential.
So basically, the residents that are on Selvits Road is what we're concerned with?
That's correct. And Favorite, yeah, because Favorite goes through...
And Favorite Road? And the facility then will be at the... Towards the western edge of this property?
East... Yes, sir. Western edge. I'm sorry.
Hello?
I apologize. What'd you say?
Western edge.
It will be on the western portion of this property?
The manufacturing plant will be on the western edge of the property. That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
How about lighting? Is there gonna be like a lighted pole yard or something that's gonna have light shying into the residences or anything? Or is it all pretty much internal lighting? Because you said you're only moving poles during the day.
There will be lighting. There is an office associated with this facility. That's on... It's even further west than the building, the manufacturing building. There'll be a parking lot there that will be required to have lighting. There's really no proposed lighting on the east side of the building at this time. As far as the storage areas, I'm not certain if there's gonna be any lighting or need for lighting in the storage areas.
No. If really, if we're only going seven to seven, we would say that we don't need any lighting there.
So it appears all the lighting will be...
Maybe for security purposes, but nothing other than just, you know, maybe security lights.
We had discussed, I don't remember seeing it in the plan, about the forklift beeping. Did you guys have any comments about that? I know we discussed something alternative to the beeping.
Yes. So Chair, we did discuss internally with staff. OSHA has a white noise backup beep that's approved by OSHA. And that could be another tactic to reduce noise for the crane.
Mr. Chair, we are aware of that. It's white noise. It sounds a little bit like static. If you ever... We went on YouTube and researched it, and my client researched it. And it's something that the crane does offer as an option. And we would be willing to have that as a condition as well, instead of the beeping and the white noise.
What about forklifts and stuff? Is that just for the crane? Yeah?
There's really... We haven't talked about forklifts, Hal.
The forklifts that we use would all be internal inside the building.
Oh, okay. I'm speaking very experienced, living a lot closer than 800 feet to a roofing supply company. And the forklifts are definitely the most annoying part of it. Constant beeping. Any other questions from our staff or the applicant at this time on the board?
What would be placed in the proposed open space? Is that the native vegetation that's on-site presently? Or do you have a landscape plan for that?
There's no native vegetation on the site presently. It's an orange grove. So it would probably just be sought or have, behave, grass in it. And it'll look like a yard. And it'll be maintained. That's what our proposal would be.
Mr. Munt?
Was there any discussion about putting a signal on Midway?
No, sir. We have not. We were not requested to do that. And we have not heard any requirements for that.
I was at the Sheriff's Department on Monday, and I waited a long time to get on Midway and had to really time it in order to get out there. And I'm just thinking about on busy days.
Typically, you have to have a... If you have a signal, it has to meet a warrant study, which is a certain amount of trips on both roadways. And you can't, for the most part, unless it's a special circumstance, it's difficult to get a signal on roadway, especially like Post Office Road that doesn't have that many trips on it. So I don't know. We haven't been asked to look at that, so I haven't... We haven't even considered it.
It's getting awfully busy, as Mr. Lawrence pointed out, on Midway Road. And it's just gonna get worse.
Travel the road pretty regularly. I agree.
Chair Taylor?
Yes?
Chair Taylor, Commissioner Munt, regarding the Midway Road link. Obviously, we've experienced a reconstruction project of Midway Road from U.S. Highway 1 West to Selvits Road. And it tapers back to a two-lane, undivided roadway. The county continues to evaluate opportunities to widen Midway Road from Selvits West to Torino, where it does pick back up to a four-lane roadway. In addition to that, this project's east of the Midway Industrial Park. That industrial park originally had a developer's agreement and, you know, a cumulative traffic assessment to determine when a signal would be warranted at South Jenkins and Midway Road. So the county is keeping track with concurrency and assignment of trips on South Jenkins itself. And the county, of course, is evaluating the link of Jenkins from Midway Road north to Glades Cut Off. So that signal analysis is on the horizon as the county and the Turnpike Authority evaluate the potential for Turnpike access at Midway. And that being a tool to hopefully facilitate reconstruction of the overpass, Midway Road's overpass of the Turnpike. Obviously, we're planning long range and it's consideration of infrastructure dollars and timing. So certainly, you know, the concerns of level of service of Midway Road in the short term are there and present. But we are actively working and evaluating how we can provide relief and improve that infrastructure, that east-west arterial.
Is there a thought of four-laning Midway in that area?
Certainly.
Timing?
I do not, unfortunately. I think we have a firm timeline. You know, I think we'd love to testify that it would occur in the next five to 10 years. But it's uncertain as to that timeline, be able to facilitate it. Again, the largest cost and impediment is the overpass to the Turnpike. And the Turnpike is planning long range to be able to add lanes to their north and southbound traffic. So that overpass is continuously expanding, what that span will be and what the cost. And so we're trying to spearhead a partnership. The county has opined on design and configurations for a sun pass only on and off ramp at Midway and the Turnpike. And so we're collaborating with the Turnpike Authority and DOT to examine how best to approach that. Because that is one of the biggest hurdles. But to your point of signal analysis, you know, that was part of our review. We had a third-party traffic consultant. And prior to a final site plan approval for this project, a certificate of concurrency would be required. We understand that based upon the employees and the activities of this project, roughly 200 trips per day, the majority being employees light truck load when it comes to deliveries to and from the facility and poles being removed. One thing is part of the conditional use. You know, we talked about when are peak hours? So between 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m., that's when folks are heading to work, heading to school. Same thing with 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., folks returning home from work and school. There may be a consideration to... And I'll say it lightly. It's challenging to provide active enforcement of this. But it may be possible for the company in operation to dispatch their delivery trucks when we have the longer, larger trucks, bringing poles from the site to their final destination to assign those trips off-peak hours. And again, if you're a truck driver, the last thing you wanna do is be turning onto Midway Road at 7:30 in the morning or 8:15. So considering between 9:00 and 3:00, and again, between 6:00 and 7:00 p.m., might be more advantageous times.
To their advantage to do that.
Even if it's a strong recommendation as opposed to an enforceable condition. I think that's a value to contemplate.
Thank you.
Mr. Slack?
With the anticipated changes to Midway Road and the Turnpike overpass, there may be closures that could cause operational difficulties for the applicant. Have alternative routes been addressed that would work for their particular loads? For example, going up Selvits to get to Edwards could be difficult due to constraints of load allowances on that bridge where it crosses the river. Is there a vehicle, an opening in the median on Selvits from Favorite to Selvits if they were to have to go out in that direction? And would the roadway be able to handle that kind of traffic if there were some closures due to construction on the bridge or the roadway? I mean, we've seen four years of construction madness on Midway already east of the site. So I can't even begin to imagine the closures related to putting in a new overpass.
Chair Taylor, Commissioner Slack, the comprehensive plan, the Cassin's mixed-use activity area, requires that access come from the west. And they would not be improving the entire Favorite Road. So on the map in front, you can see where the gray line ends. That would be the end of the improvements to Favorite Road from Post Office to the west.
Right. I can read that on your diagram. What I'm talking about is a short-term abatement of a traffic problem where we've got road closures.
I thought you meant looking through, going through this road.
I just mean, when traffic comes to a standstill on Midway due to construction or the weaving of the lanes like we've seen east of here during the four years of construction that we've been dealing with already, what happens to these trucks carrying very long concrete pylons or poles? You know, what are the alternative routes for them? Is there a tenable solution if we've got construction closures?
Chair Taylor, Commissioner Slack, I think broader picture, because obviously, you've highlighted priorities of improving transportation infrastructure on Midway Road. And the county's also evaluating Selvits Road from Edwards South to Midway. Alignment, its intersection with Glades Cut Off, because that stop sign, that intersection certainly could utilize some upgrades. Then again, Glades Cut Off from Selvits, south and even south to Commerce Center Drive at the rear of the Reserve. So big picture, I think, if there were to be the need for an alternative other than sending trucks east and west, west of the site on Midway Road. County's evaluating how to run Jenkins north to Glades Cut Off, crossing FEC tracks. And you see the right-of-way has been preserved. That would run to the west of the Florida Municipal Power Plant, which is situated to the northwest. Additionally, you can see the extension at the north side of Post Office Road when it loops around to Jenkins. There was the concept of interconnectivity between the Midway Industrial Business Park up to Energy Lane. Because of the private nature of FPUA and FMPA's plant, that is not accommodated through traffic. However, there is the potential for private parties to collaborate and have some relief and basically take traffic from South Jenkins and Post Office Road to the north through Energy Lane back to Selvits. Now, that puts them on Selvits. And they would then have to continue either north to Edwards or north to take a westbound left turn on the Glades Cut Off. So certainly, it would be a planning and a private party exercise to consider alternative truck routes. But the county and the TPO are actively looking at this area, the growth, whether it's in the city of Fort St. Lucie to the west, the city of Fort Pierce to the west, and obviously, in the county and cities to the east. You know, Midway Road is heavily utilized. The expansion is arguably overdue. But, you know, industry and tax base and the sales tax initiative are hope, are providing opportunities to bring these projects closer to fruition. And a partnership with the Turnpike Authority is key to be able to widen Midway Road from Selvits West to Torino.
Okay. All that being said, is there a break in the median on Selvits if they were to have to go east on Favorite?
The median on Selvits, as you're approaching Midway Road, is not that far north. Again, I don't think there's a way...
Okay. So you can make a left turn from Favorite Road onto Selvits if necessary?
Yes.
Okay.
As far as I know, Favorite Road isn't really a road, right? There's no... They're only improving a section from the entrance to the property to the west. But they can't leave out of the property to the east. There's no road there.
There's no road?
No.
It has a name?
It's unimproved as far as I know. I don't know. I don't even know if it's a dirt road, is it? I'm sure one of the neighbors could help us with that. It's a what?
They're only developing...
A Millings Road?
But it ends at the end of your neighborhood. Right. Right. Yeah. I've gotta pull it up on Google Maps so you can see the...
Okay.
And I think it shows it on the site plan as well, that it ends right at the entrance to the east. There's just a nothing there.
Commissioner Slack, this is the opening in the median, the designated northbound left turn into Favorite.
Okay. Nice navigation, by the way. That was impressive.
He has a lot of practice.
Yeah. If you go forward, you see it ends right there.
Okay.
Right here. Yeah. So that will stay the same.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions of staff or the applicant from the board? Okay. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right. This is a public hearing. If there are any members of the public that wish to speak on this item, we are looking at item... Do we need to do a public hearing separately, or can we do both at the same time?
Mr. Chairman, Assistant County Attorney Catherine Barbieri, you can announce them and open them and run them con jointly. But I need two motions.
Right. But the public hearing can be... Okay. So this will be on public hearing for Item 9A and 9B, both the conditional use. So this will be on public hearing for item 9A and 9B, both the conditional use and the PNRD and site plan. If there's anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Nobody? Anyone, anyone? You don't have to.
You just saw the map and everything, where the two-story at the end?
I just need your name and address for the record, please.
Sorry. My name is Tammy Smith, I live at 4339 Favorite Road, which is the two-story at the end.
Did we just see your house?
You just saw my house? Actually, the lot to the west of us is not, it looks all like trees, it's actually cleared. There's a couple that, a little family that bought the property and they're trying to clear it and intend to build a house there. So I guess, we have like nine people on our street, and I'm wondering who these 30 people were? Maybe that was, you know, the letters were sent to? Because we're all, who would want this in their neighborhood if they had a house there? I don't know, these are a lot of empty lots surrounding it.
You can see where the notices were sent out, the properties within the.
The properties in purple are identified in the 30 properties.
But there's no houses except on Favorite, right? I mean, on Midway, you've got New Horizons and maybe one house.
It goes to property owners, not homeowners specifically.
But there's no houses, is that fair? I mean, it's empty lots, and who owns it? Is it the same people that owned the property where the, you know, the site has been considered?
No, I don't think so.
I just, I don't know who these 30 people are, because we've been there 22 years and some of them have been there longer and, you know, you move in with thinking it's residential agricultural, we have horses and goats and chickens and dogs and, you know, cats and everything. I don't know anything about a closed system, because I don't know much about, you know, concrete plants, because, sorry. I did start researching like a maniac after we got the letter, because, you know, my husband has COPD and asthma. My son actually had a collapsed lung last year. So we're very aware of, you know, things that can affect your health from dust. And all the stuff that I was looking at, obviously sound and dust are big factors. I don't know what they're going to do to stop it. Maybe if it's enclosed, it won't be a problem. What if it is? And how do you, you know, how do you make them leave at 10? I don't know, these are just questions, because all I can do is look at other residents, neighborhoods where people live near, you know, a concrete plant. And they, in Florida, in other states, all the same complaints, that the plant just runs 24/7, super loud, super dusty, have to paint their house all the time. My husband's retired now, he spends about eight hours a day outside with his garden, and a lot of the stuff that I've read said that the plants are just covered in this dust, you know, if you're trying to grow plants and whatever, vegetables. So there's just so many unknowns, and for this just to come out of the blue, just doesn't seem fair, because, you know, you move in a neighborhood in good faith. We raised eight kids there, and I'm afraid we would have to move. And it doesn't seem right, like go somewhere where it's already zoned for what you want to do, maybe. There's a lot of land around here. So.
Thank you.
I think that's, well, one other thing, real quick. I did look up something where the owner of Florida Concrete Recycling, he said, "You can't do what we do and have it 100% dust-free." And he also, and I know this doesn't have anything to do with this, it's just a similar situation. And he, his comment was, "This property is zoned industrial, and residents who move in should be aware of their surroundings prior to moving in." And so to come in and bring this kind of project with this many animals and people, it just, I just, I know we had to vote 50% to even have a voice, but ultimately, it's up to the commissioners, so please take the little people into consideration, that's all.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak on this item? You'll have to come up to the mic if you want to. I need it for the record. We'll need your name and address, please.
My name is Melanie Zolander, and I live at 4221, two over from her. When was the neighborhood meeting to discuss this? Because I've heard you mention it, but we got a letter 10 days ago. And you said that in the neighborhood meeting when you were speaking to him about all the information.
There was a neighborhood meeting on Tuesday, September 21st.
I believe that was sent from EDC, the.
The applicant was in charge of sending out the notices for the neighborhood meeting.
The rest of it didn't, that's why I'm asking. One of my questions is, where are you storing all of the aggregate?
Just speak into the mic, please.
I'm asking him, where is he planning on storing? Where is he planning on storing all of the aggregate? I heard northwest corner?
So the aggregate would be stored on the screen, you can see where it shows the silo, just to the west of that.
Middle of the property, then? Basically, the middle of the property?
About the western, northwestern corner area.
How far away from the homes?
So the building itself, or the silo itself, is 769 feet, and the building itself is 802 feet, so a little bit more than 800 feet from the property line.
Just under two acres from the property line?
I'm sorry?
Just under two acres from the property line? Acres about 400 and something?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
I'm sure Cory does.
Chair Taylor, acres would be an area measurement. We could discuss yards. I think the project sites 38 acres in size, so as far as the land area in the northeast, third or northeast corner, I would venture to say there's probably 10 or 12 acres of property between the building and the eastern property line. But we can run some figures.
I'm just curious, our properties are all in acres over there, and so I'm just curious how far off of our properties acre-wise, because feet-wise, I'm not as familiar with how long of a distance I'm going to be looking, but if you say two acres down the road, I know I'm at my neighbor's property. So I'm just curious how far all of these things are away from the homes. There's actually 21 homes in this small neighborhood that were now being encased in all of this new construction or new stuff, the new buildings going in here midway. There's only 21 of us that are stuck here. We love our homes, we've been here, we've been in our home 20, almost 24 years, and we keep having more and more built up, and there's other land down the road that won't cause health issues or dust that would be available for these kind of facilities further down Selvits Road, than to put it basically in our backyard to blow into our yards or the noise levels in our yards. The beeping, the white noise, while some people don't think it's a big deal, when you can't be outside of your property without hearing all of this day in and day out, it's not white noise, and it's something that doesn't go away, and it is something that you learn to have to live with. We were already there, it's not the other way around. We're not moving into their territory like you move next to an airport, you're stuck. We're there, they're moving into our neighborhood. So it's really difficult for us to sit there and go, okay, we're going to have to deal with it. We've been there peacefully for almost 24 years to have this kind of construction coming in and telling us, break your own peace, because, well, it's industrial. We're just asking you to take into the consideration, the small little neighborhood, that we have no place to go besides just moving. We don't want to move, we want to stay where we're at. We love our neighborhood. We want to make sure also that they cannot build onto, if you approve this, that there is no way that they can come out onto our road, because their property butts to the end of our road. Our road is also the only one with a nor, or a north-turning lane on the Selvits Road without the barrier.
Anything beyond what we would approve on this site plan, any deviation of that would have to come back before us and before the Board of County Commissioners.
But then the facility is already there and we're already stuck.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask the county if they would identify where her home is?
I'm not sure where she lives.
If you put the green map up, I can tell you.
What's that?
The one with the green. My property, I'm sorry.
Let's go to the mic.
Our property, they're purple grid. Ours is the, I was going to, one over to your right, that's our property, I believe. No, one down, we're the long one, across the street from that, one further down, the green below where you were at.
I'm going to zoom in for you.
Okay. The long one, right there, your hand is on it, yes. That's our property. That's how close it is in approximate to the back of their property. We have two other members that aren't here, the Smiths are the one up and over from us. That's how close we are to the back of this. In 60 feet, 100 feet, 200 feet, you still hear it, especially because noise travels. So we're just asking you to really consider us.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Louts?
She was asking about acreage-wise, from the east end of this property to that silo, a long five-acre piece is 330 by 660. So she's probably, the boundary to the silo is probably eight or nine acres deep.
Chair, just for reference, the proposed lay-down yard is 10 and 1/2 acres, and the proposed lake is 5 and 1/2 acres.
Okay, so you can see that on the gray area is 10 and 1/2 acres, just for respect.
And Chair Taylor, if members of the commission, if I could add, we have a measurement of roughly 769 from the silo to the east. If we took that north and south and multiplied it, we'd have a box of 13.5 acres if that was a one side of a square.
Okay. Okay, 13 acres.
Mr. Chairman, are there any?
We're still in the public hearing if we want to. Do we have any other members wishing to come and address the commission? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Mr. Louts has a question, I believe.
Is there any consideration from the applicant and county that they would ever use Favorite Road for an enter and exit?
Chair Taylor, Commissioner Louts, the comprehensive plan specifically states that any access to these two properties must come from the west to Post Office Road.
Okay, so that would prohibit any of this traffic going down Favorite Road?
That is correct. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just have a moment, just to try to provide some clarity on some items. The first thing is that this piece has got a MXD future land use, and the MXD future land use specifically says what can and can't go on this property, and it specifically says that industrial uses are allowed on this property. So the land use designation that's on the property now says that it can be industrial. It actually caps the amount of square footage. I've never seen that in the county comprehensive plan, happens very rarely where you're capped on the square footage. So the land use is there, we're simply implementing, we're doing exactly what the code asked us to do, what the comp plan asked us to do. We limited our square footage, we're doing the PNRD process, the planned non-residential development process, we're doing what the code says. So the use of industrial, now I know there's a ton of different industrial uses, but this property, unfortunately, for the neighbors, it's going to be industrial in the future. So I just want to make sure that we're all aware of that, that the future land use of this property identifies it as industrial, it identifies a maximum FAR. As Mr. McCray just stated, it also states that we can't use Favorite Road going west, east of the site. So I just want to make sure that we're all aware of that. The second thing is the dust associated with this facility. So this is a completely enclosed system, meaning that the aggregate bins that are outside where the rock and stone and that sort of thing are stored are outside, they're covered, they're enclosed outside of the building. The silo, it is, it's enclosed. The materials are brought into an enclosed mixing bin with a top and cover on it, they're not, you know, stirring it up with a trowel that's creating dust everywhere. These are all enclosed, they have the, they have to have a clean, nice pole as well, they don't want dust in things all over it. So this is a completely enclosed system, and the likelihood of dust getting out, we can't, we don't see that happening in the way this process is. So I think those are the two things that I wanted to state, is that this, the bin, the outdoor bins have got covers on them, the silos are completely enclosed, and the mixing bin where the stuff is mixed is completely enclosed inside of the building. So I don't, again, I often say, and I sometimes come across as a little bit too aggressive, and I don't mean to be that way, but this is a pretty good use for this property. The property is going to be industrial. We've got a client that's pushed the building as far to the west as possible. It's a bigger building, but I think overall, from an industrial user, you know, we still, everybody has to abide by the, if there's a bunch of dust leaving the site, guess what, we're going to get code enforcement issue. You call code enforcement, code enforcement comes out to the site. And I'm sure, I sat on the code enforcement board for several years, and I find a lot of people, and I got a lot of properties into compliance by being on the code enforcement board, it does work. I've seen it. So the code enforcement board is where you would go. So I think that, you know, the issues of this property being industrial, it's going to be industrial in the future. Now, we as a group have to decide what the best use is and what we can do to minimize any impacts on surrounding properties. And I feel like that staff, myself and my applicant have done that. So I just want to make sure that you guys understand the whole thing.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner.
To the residents out here, so maybe I can bring some ease to your thought processes, but my, I just built my house a couple of years directly next to an industrial property. There are semi-trucks run through there all day long, there are semi-trucks that are on storage there, I have no buffer in between he and I other than a swell in the back. I planted a wall of arica palms. Yes, you do hear some trucks coming and going here and there, but the loudest thing I hear from them is the air compressor. And when I tell you that that building is right behind my house, they're right behind my house. You guys have a buffer of 40, 50 with a fence and trees, plus another 800 feet on top of that, I have none of that. And I can tell you, sitting on my back porch, because these trucks go all night long because it's overnight storage, you do hear a truck, but I promise you, just from me, it's nowhere near what you think it's going to be. And if they're not going to impede to Favorite Road, they're not, you're not going to really feel the impact of this because it's staying far to the west of you. The barrier that they're building is going to help you also, if they're not cutting into your neighborhood, even more better. So yes, there's something going to come behind you, yes, they're going to build up, but the beauty of the timeframe is that, I know some of you said you retired, but I work through the day, so when they're going home, I'm coming home. So they're shutting down, I'm in. But even when you're home through the day, it's no, I have far more trips going in and out of that property than this ever will in the course of a day. And I can promise you, sitting in my yard, it's nowhere near the issue that you think it's going to be. I know it's scary, I know it's popping up, I know there's growth, we're about to talk about another property right around the corner from y'all here, right after this. So you guys just happen to live in a high-demand area. I fully understand, because I'm born and raised here, I know what it's like to be infringed on or encroached upon, but having, just having the knowledge of living, my property butts right up to an industrial property. And I can tell you that at this point, it really doesn't bother us whatsoever. And I can see their trucks moving, you guys won't be able to see anything going on over there once they have this built up. So just hope that maybe gives you a different insight.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Curry, for ingress and egress, is Divine Road an option for you? Take a quick look.
Mr. Odell, I've been in this county for a long time, and I know a lot of roads, but I don't know that road.
If you look on the map, Divine Road is basically perpendicular to Favorite Road, I mean, excuse me, parallel to Favorite Road down Selvits.
I don't believe there is a public right-of-way there, I think that's North St. Lucie River Water Control District, I don't think there's public right-of-way there, public road right-of-way, I should say.
Right.
That's correct.
Definitely would need some improvements, but is that an option to come in through the, through the north end? If you'll see where Favorite Road is, just look on the top, that's where Divine Road would.
A dirt road from what I can see on Google Maps.
Yeah, it would be under subject parcels that.
Chair Taylor, Commissioner Odell, that is Water Canal District right-of-way, it's not public right-of-way for transportation purposes. I think that the trail and pathway you observe is used for maintenance of that canal.
Okay, so that is not an option?
Yeah, there's houses on that road.
This, I believe this is the property raiser map, it only shows really one lot adjacent to us. I believe this is the property appraisal map. It only shows really one lot adjacent to us, along the south side of the canal, right?
It's actually split in two. The arrow's covering it.
Okay.
Any other questions, staff or the applicant? Mr. Slack? Thinking about it?
Mr. Curry? Would the applicant be willing to put in a dust abatement system, such as sprinklers around the silo and the aggregate storage building, in case there were dust created by the offloading and movement of the materials?
I believe so, yes. I don't think there would be any reason to not do that. But what I'm, again, these questions that you guys are bringing up about dust, I've been working on this project for a couple of months now. Unfortunately, maybe I'm just not as detailed oriented as these guys, as y'all are.
There's a lot of dust that's been created by the batch plant on Midway Road and the concrete recycling facility next door to it.
That's all open, though. This is all enclosed.
I recognize that.
The bins where they store the aggregate have tops on them indoors. When the company, when the group comes to put the cement mix in, they have a hose that they bring from the truck, and they tie it into the silo. The cement dust never, from the way we do manufacturing, we can't see where there would ever be any dust that escapes this. So if having sprinklers there, I don't know how we, where we would put them, or what we would do, but anything that we can do to help, you know, to try to address your concerns, we would be willing to do it. So we're gonna have to have irrigation there for the landscaping anyway, so I don't think it's any big deal to run some additional lines over there to that for a couple of irrigation heads. I think, is that what you're thinking of?
That sort of thing, yes. And actually, your explanation of how the cement powder is moved from the truck into the silo is helpful. And it can help the neighbors understand the level of dust that they're going to experience. That sounds extremely minimal. Can you explain also how it gets from the silo into the mixing facility?
It's the same system. It's a hose that comes out of the silo, goes into an enclosed mixer. Think of a big mixer that's got a cover and a top on it. It's all enclosed, and it mixes inside of that. So it's, there's really no, it's not like a guy with a shovel that's going in and shoveling out of a silo and putting it in a mixer. It's all done through hoses. It's a contained system.
Okay.
And my client, Hal, and both the guys that are texting me here, so I'm looking down at my phone a lot, they keep saying washed rock, washed rock, washed rock. And I, again, I'm a planner, so I don't know everything. But I guess washed rock makes a big deal. There's no dust associated with it. It's a washed rock that comes to them as the aggregate. So that's the other thing that they keep saying, is the washed rock.
I think mentality wise here, when we talk about a concrete plant, you drive all over our area, you see all this open outdoor stuff, and people are thinking, front end loaders picking up dirt, moving them here. I mean, that's the vision, right? Trucks driving around, dust coming out everywhere. I mean, that's what we're envisioning, but this is not the case with this system.
Any other questions of the applicant or of staff on the board? All right. Thank you, Mr. Curry. I think you can sit down finally. So we'll go ahead and move item nine A, the conditional use permit petition. So if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Odell?
Okay, I have a motion. After considering the testimony presented during the public hearing, including staff comments, and the standards of review set forth in the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, I hereby move that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the St. Lucie County Board of Commissioners for a conditional use petition to allow concrete manufacturing as an allowable use within the RCOs of Planned Non-Residential Development, subject to the conditions of the resolution, because the proposed conditional use petition is consistent with the general purpose, goals, objectives, and standards of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan.
Point of clarification, I know the applicant offered to limit the business hours till 7:00 PM. Is that included in your motion?
Yes, it is.
But, hold on. The petition and the PNRD are two separate things, right?
Oh, right. So that should be on the next.
Conditions would go on the PNRD?
All right, we'll put it in both.
Chair Taylor, they'll be built in together, but the conditional use is traditionally where reasonable conditions would be applied at business operations. And that could be anywhere from hours of operation, priority truck routing times. We talked about the fabric of the buffer wall, and even recommendation of dust containment precautions.
All that's in there.
We talked white noise.
Second.
We have a motion as seconded by Commissioner Lounds. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Bridgers?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Slack?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Binner?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Slay?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Lounds?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Munt?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Odell?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Low?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Taylor?
Yes, ma'am. All right, the motion passes unanimously, and then we'll move on to item nine B. If there's any further discussion, I'll entertain a motion. Those are just suggested motions, remember. You don't have to read from them if you're not prepared.
Chair Taylor?
Mr. Slack?
I move we approve the PNRD with the stipulations described earlier regarding the construction of the wall being out of concrete rather than PVC as a more permanent medium, and the other discussion items that were mentioned regarding the traffic. I feel that this project addresses a serious need in our building construction industry and would be much appreciated by many people. And as a gesture to the neighbors, I think they've done a fine job of pushing their most intensive uses far to the west and sparing the neighbors as much as possible noise and dust in their development.
Seconded by Commissioner Low.
Are we adding any stipulations of this as far as closure of time?
She had added...
Seven o'clock?
The concrete wall instead of an opaque fence, which I don't believe we really discussed.
Well, we tried, or they thought that they didn't need, because there's forty feet of buffer.
Right. That was the motion.
Okay.
The motion was including a concrete fence and hours of operation and dust dampening measures. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Bridgers?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Slack?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Binner?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Slay?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Lounds?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Munt?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Odell?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Low?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Taylor?
Yes, ma'am. Motion passes.
And we want fishing rights for all the neighbors for the big lake.
Keep in mind that we are just an advisory board. This will move to the Board of County Commissioners for a final review and decision. So we might look important up here, but we're just recommending approval to the board.
Y'all might wanna stick around for the next one, because it's right around the corner.
I think you're the same people that'll be here for item nine C. We'll move on to public hearing, item nine C. Madam Secretary?
Item nine C, Wawa, Midway, and Salvets preliminary planned non-residential development, PNRD, rezoning and site plan. The applicant is seeking approval of a planned non-residential development rezoning and preliminary site plan to be known as Wawa, Midway, and Salvets PNRD.
Welcome, Ms. Jody.
Good evening, Chair Taylor and members of the commission. Tonight I'll be presenting, for the record, my name is Jody Kugler, Senior Planner with the Planning and Development Services Department. Tonight I'll be presenting item nine C for a planned non-residential development petition submitted by Engineering Design and Construction on behalf of Wawa Florida LLC to allow a gas station with alcohol sales as a permitted use within the proposed Wawa, Midway, and Salvets planned non-residential development. In accordance with the public notice requirements outlined in this, outlined in section eleven point zero zero point zero three of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, advertisement for this public hearing was advertised in the St. Lucie County News Tribune on Saturday, November sixth, 2021. In addition, notices were mailed to adjacent property owners located within five hundred feet of the subject property, and two signs were placed on the subject property, one at Midway Road, and the second sign was placed on Salvets Road. The six point zero two acre project site outlined in red is located at the northwest corner of Midway Road and Salvets Road in Fort Pierce. The future land use designation is commercial, which allows for permitted uses within the commercial neighborhood, commercial office, and commercial general zoning districts. The subject parcel is designated by the neighborhood, Commercial Neighborhood Zoning District. The adjacent zoning designation include Commercial Neighborhood and Agricultural Residential to the east, Agricultural Residential to the northwest, and the City of Port St. Lucie District located to the south. The submitted preliminary plan identifies a five thousand eight hundred and twenty square foot convenience store with alcohol sales and outdoor seating, a canopy which includes eight gasoline pumps with sixteen fueling positions, and associated site improvement, including onsite storage retention area, water and wastewater connections with Fort Pierce Utility Authority, an eight-foot tall OPEC fence, and they are providing twenty-three percent of open space, which only twenty percent is required. The applicant held a neighborhood meeting regarding the subject petition on July eighth of this year. Approximately fifteen residents attended. The residents to the north expressed concerns regarding the applicant to maintain the existing tree canopy to buffer the noise and light pollution. The representative agreed to maintain the existing tree line outlined in green. In addition to the separation provided from the proposed structures, the proposal requires the applicant to provide ten foot of landscape buffer along all property boundaries and a fifteen-foot landscape buffer adjacent to the right of way. Furthermore, when a non-residential development abuts residential, the code requires an eight-foot tall masonry wall or OPEC fence, and perimeter tree plantings and a continuous hedge should be planted on both sides of the barrier in accordance to the Land Development Code, section seven point zero nine point zero four, Prence E. The submitted preliminary site plan identifies eight-foot wall tall OPEC fence, and required landscaping will be constructed along the eastern and western portion line adjacent to the residential property. In accordance with the public notice requirements outlined in section eleven point zero three of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, notices and response forms were mailed to the adjacent property owners within five hundred feet of the subject property. Of the twenty-eight notices mailed out, the Planning and Development Services received no response. The conditions of approval that we're proposing is access as shown on the preliminary site plan is not approved with this application. Any proposed access beyond the site property adjacent to Midway Road will require a cross-access easement agreement with the adjacent property prior to final site plan approval. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff and applicant is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad, do you have a presentation on this? Any questions of staff or the applicant on the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say something. The last application, I unfortunately didn't give my opening speech, and I wanted to commend staff and this board and everyone else. I don't know if you remember, but several months ago, before you, proposing changes to the PNRD code. And we talked about how the PNRD was a good tool for the county to use to help, I don't wanna use the word control, but to place regulations and restrictions on a piece of property while you did the zoning. So you did both of those things together. And we, the county made a pretty significant change to the PNRD process. And I think I remember saying that, instead of saying it's gonna make it easier, it's really a working relationship between staff and the applicant. And tonight I have three PNRDs before you. So I think that's just an example of, when we made the change to the code, it made it a process that we could work with staff. The first one, I didn't really have a choice, the one that was just before you. I had to do PNRD. These next two, we chose to do a PNRD. There's several options on how to propose this development on this property. The property that we're proposing tonight, believe it or not, is an allowed use, is a conditional use on this property. But what we're doing is we're doing the PNRD process because we liked that process, and it gave staff a level of comfort as well. So I just wanted to say that, just to commend everyone, that we worked through that, doing the PNRD changes, and it's really coming to the truth. It's coming to fruition as we speak. So just wanted to introduce Scott, I'm sorry, Scott Kearney. I was about to say Scott Peterson. Scott Kearney, who is here with Wawa, and David Baggett from my office is here as well. David is the engineer of record. Scott, you know, is welcome to come up and speak and tell you guys anything about Wawa. I did wanna mention that we have, Scott and I went out and met with Vince Peterson, who is the property owner directly to the north of us. We walked his property line. We went over what type of buffering to put in there. And he's unfortunately not here tonight. But he's been in pretty much support. I can't, I'm not gonna speak for him. But we had a neighborhood meeting, and then we actually had a second meeting where we went and walked the property line with him, talked about trees that we were gonna save, talked about what type of material was gonna go in in that buffer on the north property line. So I just wanted to let you guys know that Wawa, Scott was there, and I was there, and we put in the extra effort here. So be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Any questions, staff, the applicant, Mr. Binner?
From the neighborhood meeting, was there preference on the fence or concrete wall? I couldn't make out whether it was a fence or a wall on the plan, separating the residential from the...
I should've looked at that, because I know we went back and forth. But I believe we settled on a fence on there. I think that was okay with the property owner to the north.
I think if I remember correctly, Wawa offered to add some additional landscaping on...
Correct. On his side of the fence.
Yeah, on his side of the fence, on his property. I thought was kinda cool. Any other questions of staff or the applicant?
Jody, when you said the condition was that there be no, that the access was not approved with this plan, can you point to the access that you're referring to? Okay, so that's the part that is not approved. The other two access points are?
Chair Taylor and Commissioner Slack. The property is six point two acres. As you can see, this property will be plotted after the approval for the PNRD. And the access for the parcel B has not been approved based on the location. So we want, when the applicant comes forward, or whoever purchased parcel B, we wanna be able to evaluate that access further and to get an agreement between the two property owners, have a joint access.
And is that because it's so close to the driveway of the residential property to the west?
Yes, that residential driveway is existing. So that is one of the things that we do wanna evaluate whenever a site plan moves forward on parcel B.
I can add to that, David Baggett, EDC. What we've done, and what you can't see exactly on the map, is we've been coordinating with DOT and their consultants about the improvements along Midway Road. We actually went to their public meeting that they had to discuss the improvements along the corridor there. One, to, you know, let them know our presence, and then two, to, you know, start that collaborative relationship. And we did it in a way that the residents were there. I see some of the folks, the residents are immediately to the west of us are here tonight. And what you don't see there, and on the plans, I think we've put in file with you guys, they are planning to do a left turn lane straddled along the property line on the very western boundary where the mouse is on the screen. So we are anticipating, you know, to be able to provide a driveway there when that time comes. However, like we said, we don't have the exact use on that second parcel yet, so we wanna leave it flexible to work that in. The goal is to collaborate with those folks and make sure that access works for them. They were actually ahead of us, working with DOT to make sure that they got a left turn there. It's gonna help them. It's gonna help us. We're probably not going to get a left turn lane any closer to that intersection, so the more collaborative we are there, the better for everybody.
Mr. Binner?
Field delivery... Fuel delivery trucks, are they going to, where are they going to be coming in and out of here from?
So the, the, you know, and, and this is strictly for the zoning portion of it, we, we have a lot of those items that kind of work out with the site plan approval. It's intended, though, that they would stick to the Wawa entrance that we're providing, the ride-in, ride-out.
All turning right-hand off of Midway, or are they coming off of Salvitz?
Primarily, it would be, it would depend on what their truck route was. They have other stores in the area, so if they were, say, going to the new one that we're finishing up on Virginia, and then coming down this one, they may be coming from Salvitz. Absolutely, yeah, and Scott can allow a little bit more in their circulation.
Yeah, Scott Carney, real estate engineer for Wawa, and worked on all the projects, actually, we have open in Saint Lucie County to date, so we've got three stores open already. And the idea here where the fuel truck deliveries would take place, they would probably, they could access probably either access point and still make the delivery onsite, because we have a layout that's got the dimensions to allow it to go from both access points.
They wouldn't be doing U-turns or anything on either road at the fuel truck?
They should not have to, no. So most likely it would be, they'd take the right end without having to do a U-turn movement.
Any other questions from the board, staff or the applicant?
Where does that, where are the fuel tanks on the site plan, please?
So on the site plan, they are located on the south side, southeast corner of the fuel canopy area, just down a little bit further south. It's a little bit more. There you go.
You can kind of see a little yellow line on the?
Faded out a little bit. But they're located right there, almost on the hard corner of the intersection.
And if there were a spill, how do, how do you deal with catchment of spilled fuel?
So we take our spills, environmental issues, anything associated with fuel, very seriously. That's the last thing Wawa wants to have. And so we've got the, the top-of-the-line tanks that we put in the ground to begin with, they're double-walled with a brine solution in between them that is pressurized, so that if there's any potential leak, it would be noticed immediately, because it's monitored 24/7, 365, and a alarm would go off in the store itself, and also at our headquarters up in Pennsylvania, in Philadelphia. And so when that happens, it shuts down the system immediately, gets an immediate response from our spill response team that we have on standby for those kind of concerns if that would happen. Haven't had an issue like that really occur. If there's a spill on site that's above grade, above ground, then that is notified immediately to our stores there, too. They've got spill containment kits, our, we have multiple associates that are trained on what to do, how to do it, how to report it if it's a reportable issue, and this training is repeated annually. Some are required to have certain certifications, too, in addition to that, to make sure that they're up on the latest standards and regulations, too. So again, the last thing Wawa wants is to have any concerns with spills, so we try to minimize that possibility to begin with.
Is the edge of the parking lot curved?
It is.
So that if there were a spill, there would be a way to keep it contained while it's not able to absorb it?
It is curved, and I know, it would go to the rear, so right now our tanks are up to the front side, and ultimately we go to the retention area on the north rear of the property, so most, most likely, we'd be able to detect it and to, you know, get containment in place before it would get into the, the stormwater system to the north.
Excellent.
The hours of operation?
We're 24/7.
What is the, in your parcel B, what is the potential of that parcel? Like, what do you look for for?
For the remainder to the west?
Yeah.
So it would comply with whatever the uses are that are allowed by zoning right now. We haven't marketed actively at this point. We're trying to get through these steps first for our, our piece, and then once we have that determined, then we'll move forward with the remainder.
Gotcha.
But we, we don't have a, any signage out there right now promoting it.
Okay.
Unless you've got some ideas.
I might have one. I might have one.
Moonswiner South?
I only got one idea.
Close to my house, I don't hate it. Any other questions of staff or the applicant from the board? All right, thank you. Appreciate it. This is a public hearing, if there's anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item, please come forward. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for further discussion and/or a motion. Mr. Munt?
There's no discussion, I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
After considering the testimony presented during the public hearing, including staff comments and the standards of review set forth in the Saint Lucie County Land Development Code, I hereby move that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the Saint Lucie County Board of County Commissioners for an amendment to the official zoning atlas for a planned non-residential development, PNRD rezoning from CN Commercial Neighborhood Zoning District to the PNRD zoning district and preliminary site plan for a retail convenience store with alcohol sales and outdoor seating, including a fueling station and canopy within the Wawa, Midway, and Salvitz Road PNRD, subject to the conditions of the resolution, because the application is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Saint Lucie County Comprehensive Plan and satisfied, satisfied the standards for review for rezoning and site plans in the Saint Lucie County Land Development Code.
Second. That was a long motion. We have a motion in a second. No further discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Bridgers?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Slack?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Binner?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Slade?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Lowndes?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Munt?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr., Mr. Odell?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Lowell?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Taylor?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Odell voted twice, but I think that's it.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, my hearing is going.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. I just want to say thank you to Wawa, I think you guys have proven yourself to be a pretty good neighbor so far. I haven't, at least myself, heard any complaints about any other properties, and we just thank you for that effort you put in.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question? When will your Wawa store open on Virginia Avenue on US 1?
First week of December.
Thank you. I'd say that's the only complaint I think I've heard, was the one in Tradition, took too long to build. We were too excited about it.
Are you targeting Lakewood Park at all? We can, yeah.
You got two acres, huh?
Clearly, I know this is a point of it, but we are very, very happy with Saint Lucie County.
Thank you.
These people have figured out who we are, and they come very frequently.
I can't imagine.
I know, we're glad to have you, man.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, guys.
Yep.
All right, we'll move on to item 9D, MMRV Park Planned PNRD Plan, whatever, rezoning preliminary site plan. Madam Secretary, why don't you read that, just in case?
MMR RV Park Plan Non-Residential Development PNRD rezoning and preliminary site plan. The applicant is requesting a planned non-residential development PNRD rezoning and preliminary site plan to develop an 80-lot recreational vehicle park with amenities on a 16.97 acre lot of land within the MMRV Park PNRD. The rezoning from CG Commercial General Zoning District to PNRD zoning district.
Much better, thank you. Ms. Jody, I believe you have a presentation.
Again, for the record, my name is Jody Kugler, Senior Planner with the Planning and Development Services Department. Tonight I'll be presenting Agenda Item 9D for a planned non-residential development petition submitted by Engineering Design and Construction on behalf of Friends One LLC to develop recreational vehicle park within the MMR RV Park Plan Non-Residential Development. In accordance with the public notice requirements outlined in section 11.00.03 of the Saint Lucie County Land Development Code, advertisement for this public hearing was advertised in the Saint Lucie Tribune on Saturday, November 6, 2021. In addition, notices were mailed to the adjacent property owners located within 500 feet of the subject properties, and two signs were placed on the subject property, one at North US Highway 1, and a second sign was placed on Turnpike feeder road. The subject site consists of two parcels outlined in red with a combined area of 16.97 acres located on the north US Highway 1 and Turnpike feeder road north of Kings Highway. The future land use designation is commercial, which is compatible to the Commercial General Zoning District. On September 28, 2021, the Board of County Commissioners adopted an amendment to the Land Development Code to allow recreational vehicle park zoning district as a permitted use on properties classified as commercial. And the subject property is designated by the Commercial Zoning District, Commercial General. The adjacent zoning designations include Commercial General to the northeast and south, and Agricultural Residential located to the west. The proposed development is consistent with the supplemental standards with, in section 7.1016 for the recreational vehicle parks. This site includes 80 RV sites outlined in purple on the parcel east of the Turnpike feeder road with the western parcel entirety dedicated to preservation and open space. A 25-foot landscape buffer borders the northeast and west edges of the site for privacy and noise intrusion for adjacent traffic. Additionally, a preserve edge of varying width is located along the east and north boundary. A 20-foot buffer is provided to the south adjacent to the existing mobile home. Community amenities include a pool and a clubhouse inside the southern edge of the RV sites with a recreational area in the southeast corner. Detailed designs for the common areas along, along with analysis of all the proposed buildings consistent to be with the county's community architectural standards within section 7.10.24 will be reviewed with the final PNRD site plan. The 6.14 acre parcel to the west of the Turnpike feeder is not proposed for any impacts and therefore is being designated to count towards meeting the open space requirements, while the 10.56 parcel to the east of Turnpike feeder road is proposed for impact for the construction of the RP, RV park. The parcels are currently vacant and unmaintained. The private, primary access will be from north US Highway 1, and a proposed unpaid stabilized emergency access from Turnpike feeder road. In accordance with the public notice requirements outlined in section 11.00.03 of the Saint Lucie County Land Development Code, notices and responses for forms were mailed to the adjacent property owners located within 500 feet of the subject property. Of the 13 notices mailed out, the Planning and Zoning Services Development Department received no responses. The applicant held a neighborhood meeting regarding the subject petition on August 12th of this year, and there was no neighbors attended.
We've got to fix that typo that was on both of them, on the other, other slide there.
Oh, sorry.
You see it? The typo on the slide? Not in favor and not in favor?
Oh, yes.
It was on the other one, too, I was just making sure someone's aware of that.
The red is really not in favor.
Yes, probably as red as my face right now.
I'm glad you clarified that, because I thought I'm not getting this.
The proposed, our, our proposed PNRD rezon and preliminary site plan conformed to the standards of review as set forth in Saint Lucie County Land Development Code, sections 11.06.03 and 11.02.07, and have been found to be consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Saint Lucie County Comprehensive Plan. Staff recommends the Planning and Zoning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the Board of County Commissioners, subject to the following conditions of approval. Prior to approval of the final major site plan, the applicant shall demonstrate compliance with the Land Development Code, section 7.10.24, Community Architectural Standards for the clubhouse, including a lighting and sign plan. Recreational vehicles site shall be for rental only, no sale or individual sites is permitted. The length of stay of each rental site is limited to 180 days in accordance to the Florida This concludes staff's presentation. Staff and applicant is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Is there any questions of staff?
Jody, I can ask you a real quick question. Can you go back to the original plan, it showed the ingress and egress on that property coming down Turnpike feeder road?
Chair Taylor, Commissioner Law, that is an unstabilized emergency access only.
That's an emergency, I was wondering about coming on the Turnpike feeder road?
Yes.
Only emergency.
The primary access will be off of US 1.
Of US 1.
I think a future pedestrian access was discussed?
There is a, yes, there is a future pedestrian access along with the greenway trails that we're, we're going to incorporate, the county's greenway trails, along Turnpike feeder.
Any other questions of staff? All right. Mr. Curry, do you have anything to say?
I always have things to say. Good evening, Board again, it's the EDC hour here tonight at the Planning and Zoning Board. This is another example of an application, we had a couple of different ways to approach this project. We could have come in and rezoned it to recreational vehicle park. There were some concerns from staff about other uses that are allowed as part of the recreational vehicle park. So again, the PNRD was a tool that we used to restrict the uses to just recreational vehicles instead of potentially mobile homes or manufactured homes or other uses, and so it's, it's again, a use of a tool that this board and the county as a whole implemented. I'm very excited about this project. My client's actually already closed on this piece, and they're excited about moving forward, so be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Binner?
She said RV park, so no, like, what about tiny homes built on utility trailers? Nothing, it has to be an actual RV with the tag as a designated RV?
Yes, sir, correct.
And is there any age, like, age restrictions? So I'm not bringing a 1950's Hoopde into this RV park and filling it up with a bunch of those?
Well, I'm sure you could do whatever, if it was, if it had a license plates on it and it was able to run on the road, it probably could be just about anything, but we don't expect that. We really think this is a great location, I think it's halfway between Fort Pierce and Vero, and you can come here and stay, and you can get the best of Fort Pierce and the best of Vero, so we're really, really good location for our RV park.
Mr. Munt?
Mr. Curry, on your neighbor meeting, was that the invitations, did you provide those?
Yes, sir, I did.
And was it the 500-foot radius, or how did you determine who you were going to?
It was the 500, and we had no one show up, actually, so.
I'm sorry, say again?
There was, it was 500 feet, I believe, we get the list from the county, just so you guys know how the neighborhood meetings go. When I'm required or requested to get a neighborhood meeting, I call Jody, Jody calls the GIS department, they send me the list, I write a letter, I put the label, and I send it out, so.
You send it out by mail?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I, I was pleased to see that, when I first saw it was down at Tradition at your offices, but then I saw in your letter, you also said you could participate by Zoom?
Yes, sir.
I think that's great.
Yes, sir, it was, it's a tough spot, I usually try to find a location, those last two projects that were just up, were on Midway Road, and we had both of those at the Chamber of Commerce Building, which is just down the street, it was a perfect location. This one was a little bit tough, I was thinking about downtown Fort Pierce, and so I figured that with COVID, and we, we set up the Zoom pretty well, so I had that as an option, yes.
I'm sorry you didn't get any attendees, but it was a good way to handle it.
Yes, sir.
I had a similar question, because the, the notices, the, there's a, I think it's a rental RV park just to the, to the south. Only one notice goes to that property owner. I thought that was worth noting, that, right? I don't think everybody individually was invited, it's just one property owner. It looks like there's a whole bunch of people to the south, but it's one, one property.
Thank you.
So, I had the same, same question.
Isn't Pineapple Joe's near that?
A little bit, yeah, a little bit further south. I think it's a great idea for that location.
Yeah.
Ain't much else going there.
Any other questions from staff? Mr. Slack?
I can't quite see all the things on your site plan, because we're zoomed out so far. So can, can you zoom in maybe, Jody, so that we can see some of these things along the south edge? Like, there's something, okay, recreational area, wetland buffers.
So I could maybe walk you through, so that's a little bit wider buffer along the south, that was where we put our extra space. To the, to the left side or to the west of the property, I think they're proposing pickleball courts there, since that's the new fad. And then across on the north side, there'll actually be a clubhouse with a pool and everything over the lake. I do want to talk about the east side of the property, you can notice that we only have like two RV sites there on the south side, and I don't, I think we took all the ones, our original plan had RV sites up and down there until I walked the site with the environmental department. Department. And, um, I was out there, it was, I like doing that sort of thing. So we walked it and that's, um, scrub habitat along US 1 there. So we were able to work with the, um, Environmental Department, actually preserving that rare and unique scrub along, along US 1. So that's kind of the, the outlook of what you're seeing there.
It's going to look a little odd with just two sites jammed up against US 1.
You still have a 20-foot buffer there, so it's going to be a little bit, you still, you still, it's not like it's going to be right against US 1, there'll still be a buffer there.
I can't get an idea of what the scale of the buffer is. Do you, do you know what the dimension is?
I have the plan here in front of me. I should be able to tell you that. I agree with you, it's hard to read it there.
Proposed something landscape buffer?
It's 25 feet.
25 feet, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And what is, what is in the white area on the south side of the pond?
Um, there is a couple of things there. We're going to have a clubhouse on the west side of the, um, that, that first one where Jody's hand is now is, is a, is a clubhouse and then to the right of that is a parking area. And then, I don't know why we showed it on the preliminary development plan, but that beautiful rectangle at the corner is a lift station.
Cool.
Okay. I have a question.
So on, on each of the RV sites, is there accommodation for car parking and, and then is everything connected to this, uh, like a central wastewater treatment system?
There should be a detail if I did, if I remember right. Um, I guess it did not show up, but maybe it did. Yes, on the last, on the second page is a typical RV space that shows, uh, 60 by about 105-foot watt-long RV space and it has the ability to have your RV, a car and a little patio area. And that will have centralized water and sewer and electric that you plug into, uh, that goes to the lift station and everything else.
Thank you.
Chair.
Mr. Lowell?
Where's the waste disposal in your, this project?
So we were just talking about that. There's a big, there's a lift station on the bottom right-hand corner, um, on this page, you can see it. It's rectangular just south of the RV sites in the purple, um, in the right-hand corner of the property. So there'll be a, a typical, um, wastewater collection system, just like you have in any neighborhood where there'll, there'll be gravity sewer lines in the facility. Gravity lines will go to that lift station. And we're actually having to tie into the sewer, I believe, down at Endrio, I think. So we are going to have to run some sewer out there.
It's not up to Endrio yet, I'm just coming up there, isn't it?
Yep.
Is it, where's the garbage going to go?
Um, I, this is the preliminary development plan, so it doesn't get into the detail of the exact location of the garbage. And so, um, we believe we have provided dumpsters probably around the clubhouse. Unfortunately, I just don't have that in front of me right now. But yes, sir, we are going to have to provide dumpsters.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Mr. Curry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Uh, seeing that all of the public has left, and I will open the public hearing if there's anyone wishing to speak on this item. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for further discussion and a motion.
A motion to approve.
Second?
All right. We have a motion in a second?
I second.
Yep. We have a motion to approve in a second. Any discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Bridgers?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Ms. Slack?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes, ma'am.